Black Mountain Software and the Mass Program. And we also need to add, we'll just put it under, yeah, we'll just put it under number one on my business. All right. Then we also need to add, just put it as number four for your business. We've got proposals for the Ford Street drainage improvements. And then if we could put it under number five, Chad was wanting to address us about some new repairs of lift stations. Amanda was also talking to us about, maybe should pass the changes in the office closes.
We also probably need to add in there about things that Frank once said coming to call.
Okay.
Any other street project.
Do more down this sidewalk.
Yeah. And I also feel like I need to make a statement concerning all the audit findings. So we can just add all them new things after the letter of support for Kayla's law.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
All in favor? And you opposed? All right. Since Linda's underway, we don't have a minute, so we'll just have to table that. All right, this time I'll open up the full Republican call here.
Amanda, are you here or have a call man or are you just?
Just doing my own.
Okay, all right.
We have a motion to close public call. Motion to close public call.
Thank you.
All in favor? Number one on our own business is the Black Mountain Software. Had a chance to look over that.
It looked like her was two year old once, so I just kind of kept this one in.
Yeah. See, this is part of the Mass Program that we've been discussing. And they're going to pay for the implementation of this and conversion and training. Plus they're also going to pay for catch-up work because we're still way behind on our bank recs. And they're going to pay for that. And they're also going to pay for the annual maintenance cost for the system for year from one through three. And it's a very good program.
So I've noticed on here showing the basic package. What about payroll? Is that going to be in that too? Or are we just doing our payroll like we typically do?
Yeah, we're going to keep doing it.
Okay.
And I've talked to them about the new meter system. And we're going to go with a company that will match up with the Blue Ridge Software. And there were some concerns about that.
And the girls have always been training with it?
Yeah, they've done a presentation. Not really training, but I mean, they've done a presentation and showing them.
Now, what about the guys, like for the couples system?
I'm not talking personally to them, but they don't ever mess with the Southern Software anymore.
Amanda was just pretty content with the presentation of this.
Yes, they're doing really well and it's going to cover all of what Linda had brought to me. We were in there for four hours going through the modules and stuff. And they were really, I think it's going to get, before they come in and do anything, they're going to come in first and get us caught up on everything, bank recs, whatever we need. They're going to come in and take care of that first and get us ready to jump in with both feet. But they are going to provide people to come in and help us with all of that.
So the sooner that we approve this, the sooner they'll set up their nature.
And also if we need any update on equipment, it'll be covered. Say like the server, anything like that, they'll come in, it's already paid for. And they'll have a backup system, not only just on our server, it'll be backed up to four different locations. So we won't have to worry about if something happens in here, everything's lost. So I really like that.
So are you needing a motion?
Yeah, yeah.
Do I make a motion that we accept this Black Mountain Software?
Okay, I just want to caution at this point since we don't have a second.
Oh, okay.
Amanda, I mean, is taking, yeah, but she's, yeah, just wait till she gets back in here.
He's giving you time, Amanda. Sorry. I make a motion that we accept the Black Mountain Software and get the initial service going for Amanda and Linda.
All right, all in favor? And you opposed? Next up, our attorney has topped up an interlocal agreement with the RTA.
There were some things missing, so I took as much notes as I could and used them to do this. But I'm not sure on who is supposed to initiate the services and who's going to advise whoever's responsible for payroll and how is it going to be payroll by the town, for the girls or by the RTA board. So it's either reimbursement or actually a check from the RTA. I don't know. I don't have it in my notes and I didn't have the minutes. So I guess those are things that need to be added to this, which I can do today. I brought my computer to redo today. Or we can just leave this like it is. The goal was to update the town personnel policy and then give it to Amanda to type out any of the changes.
Well, now, right now, I think they just give the payroll check and then the RTA reimbursement.
They put down their time on their time sheet if they work RTA and we take it out.
Okay, so is that how y'all want it?
Yes.
I think that's how I kind of sort of put it in there.
Yeah, we need to put in there who makes the decision for them to do it.
Well, that was the second part, but the first part was to make sure that it was a reimbursement by RTA to the town.
What brought to some, when I observed the town employees working on the Christmas tree in 2022, I reached out to the UNC school government. They said we needed an interlocal agreement for when you do work for the RTA.
So this is an interlocal agreement?
And then we change it on that.
What does this mean that the town of Robbinsville reserves the right to suspend or modify any of the portions? And is that mean we have, the RTA has to give a 30-day notice of what we need the guys to do?
No, that is a reservation for the town board to make any changes, either to change or suspend since you, this was initiated by the town board. So the town board reserves the right to make any changes. So that doesn't, I did not contemplate who was, what the mechanism was for either, now Kenny, Kenneth, Alderman Hyde is the chairman of the RTA. So I didn't know what the mechanism was. If he needed some help, who was he to contact? That's what I'm missing there. So to answer your question, that preserves the board's right to change or suspend this. At any time.
See, the RTA is a separate legal entity than the town itself.
And this doesn't cover anything that they have done in, for the county, like music and stuff? And does this cover?
Okay, to answer that question first, if you look, I put some history, not really legislative history, but to some degree, some history of why you did what you did with the first paragraph. But I made the effective date, which was when the board adopted this for November 21st, which is when you adopted it and commencing on the 22nd. So anything forward. I don't know if y'all want to discuss changing it and making it backdated? I don't know, but that wasn't in my notes.
Now, this is because of the RTA and the town that don't include the Graham County Festivals. They need to do their own and then present it to you and then you make any changes.
I'm trying to save the town some, let them do the work. So to answer, was your question answered as to what the mechanism was? And who, Kenneth or Alderman Hyde, excuse me? What is he supposed to do now that he's the chairman to initiate?
Who can tell the employees to go do RTA work for a month?
Well, you're in charge of the employees as the mayor, so the mechanism be he contacts you.
Yeah.
And they're going to have to reimburse you for whatever time.
See, I just saw them doing work on the Christmas tree and I didn't know anything about it. Somebody went and told them to do it.
You want me to put in there the legislative history of that?
So we need to wait until it gets revised or re-approved?
Well, yeah, I want to, yes, I mean, I can make these changes, but.
So what if the RTA does need them and the director or the chairman tells him about it and he says no, then what?
I don't know, the board, I don't need to respond with that answer, but.
Well, I get that.
We need to, you need to discuss what happens then. I don't want to go that far out to put that in there.
How about you just, the board approves it prior to, you know, you present it to the board in a meeting before you want to do it to do the work?
That's a good idea.
And that way the board can just approve it.
Doesn't that work?
So the mechanism would be you contact the mayor to make sure it's on the agenda and then the board discusses approves or disapproves.
Correct.
And then this is going to be a reimbursement as I'm going to do that. So they will take care, so you don't get into any issues.
They got it in the software where they can just pay them out of the RTA fund.
Okay, you want me to put that in there?
Yes.
So that would be a checking from the RTA?
No, they just get one check, it just comes out of the RTA fund.
When we do a payroll deposit, we do a deposit from the RTA fund into the payroll.
Feel like we got some employees paid out general fund and some paid out of water and so we're, and it's the same principle. You just pay them out of the RTA fund.
And I hope I don't open a can of worms for this quest of both guys and the insurance. Because I don't want them to risk, you know, paying Christmas on us to write a letter.
I wondered about that because you've got to carry workman's comp. So no, it's not a can of worms, it's actually something that's very valid and should be discussed. I don't know if you want to do that in open and closed session. I don't think it's a problem doing it in open at this point because it's something that everyone has. It's an employer, his workman's comp. I don't know, what do y'all want to do about that?
Does the RTA already carry workman's comp insurance? I assume they probably would for their director.
I'd have to.
Well, I don't know, it's a part-time position.
I don't know, I don't know the answer to that question. But I think something has to be done to make sure that the workman's comp is covering this activity.
Because I mean, even though it's technically RTA, it's still a town function. So that might still make them working for the town.
RTA, but RTA is part of the town.
Yeah, it's a separate legal entity. I mean, it's a component unit of the town, but it's a separate legal entity.
Exactly, but you are convoluting it by having your town employees do payroll. So it's something that's there, that might be an insurance question for your insurance agent. As to what needs to be done, if a separate policy needs to be in place now. So no, it's not a can of worms, it's something that I think the town needs to look at, whether it's the mayor or you as the director, chairman of the RTA. But you don't have, you don't have the need right now that you can find that out before the next meeting, correct?
We also need to talk about, put something about the town equipment there too, because they're using the town by.
Well, I wondered about that, I did not include that because it wasn't discussed.
Well, that was part of the response from the UNC school government.
Yes, it was, but it wasn't discussed in your meeting.
So I guess there's a little bit more needs to be added to it.
Yeah.
But there's no event or no need for the coming months, right?
The next events.
Okay, so that's something that can be discussed in February meeting after we find that information. But that is a point that the mayor makes is, and I wondered about that. Suppose something happens to some of the town's equipment, we have one of these events.
So what do other towns do? Do they not, do their employees not do that?
They have their contractors.
Huh?
My understanding.
Put up Christmas trees?
Depending on the budget.
I mean, I miss questions, I mean, it might be something to find out, you know?
Has the director or chairman want to find that out? I asked Murphy, didn't quite get the answer I was expecting. The mayor didn't know. I know Andrew doesn't have a division, all this did when I was with him, profits change. But the component about the equipment is a concern legally, if something was to happen.
But the board won't table it until the next meeting until the changes get made? Do you want to talk more about it or?
Well, I need to know what you want to do about the equipment. I need to know what you're going to do about the workman's comp. So I think you might have to table it for those two dates to figure out what the answers are. And then I guess there needs to be some type of motion as to if you're going to be responsible for the workman's comp or are you going to have the chairman of the RTA contact the insurance company to see whether or not there needs to be a separate policy or some kind of subrider that talks about, you know, the coverage of this. I mean, technically, these are still town employees, but you're subbing them out to the RTA, which is also part of the town of Robbinsville. Yeah, it's a separate legal entity.
It's all still under the same payroll?
It's all still under the same payroll.
So, I mean, they've already got workman's comp already, so it's like?
Not really, I mean, they've got there on the IM number.
Oh, the RTA does, yes.
Yes.
So as far as equipment, we hang the Christmas lights up for the equipment for the town. Can we not just include a Christmas tree in that and then the equipment's covered?
Do they hang lights for the town, but then they can't hang, put a tree up for the RTA?
Just give you legal advice, that's a town board question.
To me, it all should be, all of the decorations and everything should be under the town. I think the tree should be under the town, I think the decorations should be under the town. Anything to beautify the town, anything to do to make the town presentable is a town function. That's my, that's my thoughts on it. They don't look at, they don't look at RTA as being presentable. They look at the town of Robbinsville being presentable whenever something is nice or something's bad. You know, so just like the fence, the fence is under the town of Robbinsville, but it's still, you know, something that is to, that needs to be done because it looks good and it would be better for the town. That's my spiel on it.
So it's up to the board what you want to do.
I would make a motion that we put it into the policy that everything that is for the town, whether it be a holiday banner, Christmas tree, anything to do with beautification like that needs to be a town function, not a RTA. All the equipment that, I make a motion that all the equipment that is to be used to do those functions is all under the town workman's comp policy instead of RTA. And I make a motion that it's, if it's a town function, the town employs maintenance or they are to be under the town, it's not to be under the RTA's expenditures or payroll. It kind of takes care of all that.
So we don't need that, what I'm understanding to be that motion?
I don't think we need it neither concerning things like that.
Yep, you're still going to use them for the.
But now as far as concerning like the fishing derby and the other events, that that would be a different thing.
Yeah, that would be under this.
Okay, so that would be under this.
It seems to be that it's the Christmas tree thing that seems to be the issue or the using the equipment to kind of help with putting the lights up and all that. That seems to be the issue.
So the Christmas tree or Christmas celebrations would be excluded from the RTA having to pay for?
Yeah.
Okay, got it. But everything else would be included on this?
Events that the RTA, yeah.
And just as guidance from the board, then chairman Hyde of the RTA will contact the carrier for workman's comp for all these other events, but not Christmas because Christmas is paid for by the town. So that's all covered there, but you will need to explore whether or not another workman's comp for other events such as the fishing, did you say that?
So actually, we could just make that motion to keep all those vehicles and everything under the town's expenditures and still be able to use them? Or are you, because the whole thing was brought up because of the Christmas tree thing as far as using our employees. So we still need that safeguard for the town of Robbinsville for them to do these other events too?
Well, if you.
If we make a motion to keep, to do it, do we have to?
Well, that's the whole point, that's an RTA event. If you're giving town employees you may disagree with. Unless you made all of the RTA events to the town, then that would.
Well, the other thing I'm thinking about before I get to your question is then if there's equipment being used, who's responsible for the insurance? For the collision, collision.
How often, Chad, do you guys have to use the equipment for the RTA? I know it's every event, but it's like, what, two hours? Three hours to pull the stuff and set it up? So.
So you use the truck and trailer for the music playing square? I don't know what you think that is, but they're just kind of all run together, but.
And the fishing?
And the fishing derby, but the fishing derby thing was created because the town had the sludge filled to the ditch and they used that, cleaned everything up to give back. So that is actually.
A town event too?
I guess, I mean, it was to begin with, I don't really know how it works now. But outside of that, we have the, what is it, the Heritage Festival?
And that's a county, isn't it?
Well, it's Graham County Heritage Festival, but.
The town does.
The town does. I mean, you know.
Well, it's here in the town, but who runs it?
Graham County festivals.
And who is that? Is that under Graham County itself? So it's not under the town of Robbinsville? So understanding where the mayor is coming from, not wanting to be responsible as the town when there's monies with the RTA, neither the RTA nor the town is responsible for any financial contribution or work or equipment for the Heritage Festival, correct? And that's on the 4th of July. So that doesn't need to be brought into this at all.
We need a separate agreement for them.
And that's something that I have not done. And that's something that I have not done is contact the town or the county attorney and say, hey, look, if you're gonna want us to do certain things, we need to have some type of agreement with you. But now, I, I wanna make sure, cause I'm getting a little muddled from the point of view of what exactly are we doing if you've excluded Christmas and the fishing derby? What other events does the RTA need the town employees and equipment for?
Car shows.
Restaurant, car show.
Okay, so that would be?
Single lot.
Single lot.
Does the town board want me to include these events or just say exclude Christmas and the fishing derby? I'm trying to make this as complete as possible.
The fishing derby is an RTA event, correct?
It's one that was?
It used to be the town, didn't it, but now the RTA handles it, correct?
They, the town agreed to do this fishing derby and the RTA would put it on. So, it was really a town function, was it not?
That was pre-RTA, correct, Chad?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
What year did it start?
When I first started, so, around twelve years ago.
Yeah, so the RTA wasn't born until thirteen, 2013.
Were you working there?
I was.
You were at school still?
I don't know. See what happened, the sludge went to the creek, killed the fish, so we were just, you know, doing our part to kind of put back.
So, and the trunk or treat, that few, do you work for it too?
Yes.
That's an RTA event.
So, do you want to get me the list of the events? Or do you want me just to put in here to exclude, obviously, the fishing derby and the Christmas celebrations?
Is there anything else?
Got caught off the arm.
You need to look at Chad.
Ask person, say someone that's tired of being on the sidewalk for the ten, fifteen, or whatever.
At what event?
You do. You'll be one of the person that failed?
No, at what event?
Well, and that's?
Cause you're, you're, I mean?
Say if it happened here at courthouse, not in the area.
Oh.
Just, I'm just?
Well, I, I, that's, that's a, that's a separate, that, that would be something that potentially the town, if, like, somebody leaves this meeting and falls off the curb.
I know I'm kind of opening a box.
Yeah, you're all looking somewhat at boxes.
Sorry.
That's quite right, we've got too many boxes open already. Cause I'm trying to figure out how to track this thing.
I don't know, within the town, it should be the town, but I'm, you know, I don't know.
Well, let's, let's, let's have the town maybe discuss, the town board discuss this. No offense, because I can't give advice to you. We're practically family, you know, can't do this. Although, please, what would you like to say?
My thoughts on all of it is, I, I agree that the RTA is a separate entity. You're underneath the town, but it still works under the town. I feel like that should cover it as being a town function and that the town employees should be able to work with the RTA to make these events possible.
Well?
But if it can't be that way?
The local and state government commission basically says that it is a separate legal entity and they should be paying for events, but you're starting to exclude things which dilutes this agreement. I don't know if that opens up a candle, so I'm starting to, to, to dilute it from that point of view.
Basically, all we're asking is for the RTA to pay their wages while they're doing work for the RTA.
And that's what we've all agreed upon?
Yeah.
We have agreed upon?
We just need an official agreement, that's all we need.
Well, can we write it up?
Then, workman's comp and all this other stuff kind of came into play and it's like, it, it's, it's town. So, what's separate than hanging a light, than hanging a tree? Nothing, so it needs to?
I think part of this question should be advice by your lawyer and close session and then come back at it afterwards.
Okay.
Okay, so we?
So, just table it from now on and revisit it afterward.
Okay, so what, table it, so, we're going to close session?
And then come back out and discuss it again.
Okay.
On my close, what time, well, he has to go in close session.
I'll say.
All right. Next up, updates and, uh, RH accountant's still trying to get our audit done and they sent us a big list of stuff they still need and we're scrambling around trying to get it for them. And we still have about four pages of stuff they sent us, but we've got a lot that we sent to them. And I'm working on a spreadsheet to amend the W twos, like the state wanted us to do. And Linda's not here to give the finance update, so, uh, next up is Ms. Jones.
Where you at?
Go ahead, just add that.
I was just saying, Miss Support later, pregnant. Caleb was with his dad, he made that, twenty twenty? The person that done it, it's a promise statement, he was going to get his daddy mess. But Caleb said they're all not, what is that? Buy sale. That, and he was, he's, he's still, he still has, not to release. He's not so much as attached, but two, two and a half years therapy. But I talked to him, said came back October, they're still investigating to be able to press charges and stuff. But I'd ask him what they could charge for Caleb as far as him being threatened and all the stuff that he went through. He said, no, absolutely nothing to take a charge, unless it was, once they charged for his death, they could charge after the fact as an aggravating factor, or I could do a civil suit. Says he had been sitting there all night with his daddy and him dead and being threatened not to say nothing or he'd come find him and for the longest time, what, you know, I, I couldn't even listen. He would scream and cry if I walked on porch. He'd be screaming, what if they stab you, what if, what if somebody stabbed you at the eye shot? I didn't have a clue what a eye shot was, but he finally broke down and told us. He said, if I shot this, what somebody does to you, I mean, I won't cheer down. And that just, that broke my heart. And to witness something like that and no charge could be, nothing. So, that's why I'm hoping to write, get a law. Make it a parallel each other.
I'd be happy to write you a letter of support if the board's good with it.
Well, I would appreciate it.
The board good with it? When you put that motion?
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming in, Travis.
Thank you.
Next up, Chad, you wanted to address us about the lift station?
Uh, it's in like need of some repairs, it's no longer in service right now. Um, and it is a lot of money, hundred fifteen thousand, some six hundred fifty dollars, something like that. Um, I did give two quotes, uh, one was for basically someone to come in and tell us what we need to do and with the parts. We still have to rent the equipment, we don't have anything like that. So, right now, we're having to rent out all the solids that come out of the, the collection system. But in doing that, there's a lot of stuff that gets by going into our wet well where our other two pumps are that put everything, the wastewater treatment plant. And, and the longer we like to get it repaired, the more troubles it can cause right around down the road. And those pumps that's in that pit, they're thirty-two to thirty-five thousand dollars a piece and there's two of them. So, you know, I talked to Linda about funds and stuff, cause it's a lot of money. And we still have some money that's left in the art money or whatever it was called. Uh, I did ask when Becky was, uh, Becky Darnold, she was here, if we were able to use that money for, uh, the lift station, the bar screen. And, uh, I told her that when, uh, the last finance person was here, we had done some kind of report to say what it was exactly for. And, um, she said that, uh, we'd have to check in to see if we could, but originally the money was for infrastructure, water service, stuff like that. She thought that it would never be used for that, but I don't know. But it is definitely something we have to have, it takes all the wastewater and takes the solids out of it before it goes to the treatment plant.
When you talk about renting equipment and stuff, that'd be something that might be more cost effective to help contract it out instead of trying to rent equipment.
It would be better to go with a higher number because they're supposed to have their people, and I didn't read like in real detail, but they're gonna do, take care of everything with a higher number.
You have to be in a current.
Yeah, you definitely have to have like big equipment and we, we don't have the knowledge to do something like that. That's way out of our scope of work.
So, did we? I remember you showed me the list, but I can't really remember the exact number.
I think it was one to fifteen, sixteen, hundred fifteen thousand, I think. Uh, the other number was like one oh six, one oh seven?
But the one fifteen included Prince and Crane and everything else?
I do believe so, and I did make copies, but, uh, I'm not exactly sure, uh, where those are. Probably be a good idea for us to look at it, just, you know, just to read over it. The company that, uh, let's see, it's a parts unit or something like that. And they pretty much got it, where you get parts around pretty much. It's not every day, you know, need, so?
How long have we had this?
Um, I want to say?
Twenty thirteen.
Yes, it's twenty thirteen.
So, since twenty thirteen, it's?
It's put in the same time, but waste strip. And what happens, the last name, you call that stuff, some of it's getting through to the wastewater plant. Things going to stop and those pumps up and down are avoiding it.
How long, how long will it be that company can, can be had?
Um, I don't know, um, it's usually like six to twelve weeks, it kind of depends. And they might have some of the stuff in stock, I'm not sure. I didn't even get that far just because of the amount of money it was.
So, I know, Chad, you have a budget and I know this is over your budget a lot. Should, do we need to, you need to notify them, we need to go ahead and try to start making ways of getting that money moved into your budget to?
Be under your budget?
I don't know how all that's put all together.
Yeah.
I questioned that for years.
See, we had?
Which under distribution or?
No, it's, it's supposed to have collections for line item. And there is no line item for collections, it's all wastewater. And I had said, you know, back when, uh, Taco was here, that we needed to have a line for collections because you get, run into something like, like this and gets you in trouble quick, wastewater or not. I mean, you don't get any money back from it, but there's nothing there. I mean, the only money that I have in my lines is, uh, for sewer caps and it's, uh, five or ten, maybe we've raised it a little bit, but, um, nothing of that amount. And I want to say it's still considered wastewater.
Probably everything's gonna be under wastewater if we have no line item for the collection system. And I questioned that for years, trying to get somebody to create something different, but it's not happening. That way, you can kind of keep up what each unit's costing, the collection and locally. Anything to do with wastewater brings nothing, but big time money. For the blower example, a few years ago, we had to go out, like forty thousand dollars. And I've never seen one go out.
So, so if it was putting in about the same time as this treatment plant?
Yeah, it was.
Do you foresee the stuff starting to?
Well, you know, they figure, well, like I said, I've been in the business thirty-some years and I've never seen one of those blowers, what happened to that happen to it when we decombed. But, you know, this year, there's a lot of mechanical parts too, that's, that, that screen down there, it probably cost you?
We don't have a secretary.
A million dollars to put in it, I mean, it's that kind of money. It's just a big expense no matter any way you look at it, with the wastewater.
And just continue discussion.
I think the, it says removal and reinserting unit is excluded.
So, then that would be another?
What are you saying, that Chad?
The two A, the recording, right here.
Yeah, custom, yeah.
So, we got one of the, kind of anyway.
Is that what you think, Chad, we have to rent something anyway?
Yeah, I think so. And it says thirteen to fifteen weeks, uh, parts availability, on four A.
How much of this removal part of this, Chad, could you guys handle?
I mean, I guess if we've got someone there telling us what we need, what, what we need to do. I mean, I'm, I'm sure we could probably do it as long as we have the equipment. I know a Mr., uh, was Trevor McKinnon? I think he's got one of those crane lifts, whatever you call that. We've used it, we've used it a lot to, to raise up like big recycle, uh, uh, stuff. So I think it would be.
I was thinking like big crane, uh, waste water.
Well, and, and I guess it kind of really goes back to whatever this guy here says, because I don't know what they would allow, you know, if, if they were supervising us. I'm not really sure.
Well, according to that, we're gonna have to remove it anyway. That's what both, both quotes on it. With the chain part anyway.
So do you think that they would be willing to remove stuff since they've already, they would have the equipment? That would be a, a separate?
I can try to contact them and find out. I'm not sure. I was under the instruction that was gonna make for, uh, the complete thing, taking it out and
I'm gonna make a motion that we table this and wait for Chad to get in contact with this company. And then we need to set up a special meeting to make sure we get this taken care of the sooner the better.
Long, thank you, thank you. Get some answers on whether I can do the, 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 the.
As soon as we leave from here, I can try to contact them. I mean, I wouldn't think more than a day or two.
You get up with him and then you get back in touch with us. And then also maybe get up with that other person you was talking about and get that and and then we just need to get the ball rolling on this.
As soon as you give us plans, we'll have them taken care of.
All right. Do you second that?
I'll say yes.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? We, we also need to add to the agenda about the Ford Street drainage improvement proposals too.
Oh, I thought you did.
Oh, yeah, we did. Yeah, we did. Okay, that'd be a big, okay. Okay, um. Did you get a chance to look over that?
See what each one of us proposal is, but I didn't watch through it.
Gerald McGeal's in, he was already a major prologist.
And that motion that we just stay with McGeal's proposal for the Ford Street drainage.
I'm shaking that.
Okay. All in favor?
On that second term.
You want to make that motion?
Um, make the motion to, uh, proceed with the Ford Street? With the, the McGeal's company?
I say all in favor? Any opposed? Next up, Amanda wanted to talk to us about possibly closing the office at four.
At the end of the day, it is hard for Linda and I to get out of here at four thirty. And Becky Garland had talked to us about, um, other places Andrews does it. They stop taking payments at four o'clock and close at four thirty. And that way I can do leave credits and cash out my drawer and everything and be out of here without having to do overtime.
Well, and that we've discussed it before.
We have.
And I thought that we had.
We didn't.
We never did.
So, uh, it would help us out just to have that thirty minutes to where.
And can you put that on the water bills store that everybody knows?
I can, I can. And you know on the website as well.
Make a motion that we change the, uh, hours for people to come in and pay their water bills to be at eight to four o'clock. And then from four o'clock to four thirty, the, the girls can perform their duties of getting everything ready to shut down and be out by four thirty.
Thank you.
All in favor? Next up, Debbie wanted to discuss the fence on the street.
Uh, the Franklin fencing company had called me one day last week and was just saying that they were, they almost have all of the equipment ready to bring and they're gonna bring it in and keep it locked up and get it ready to go. The removal of the fence that is there now, our guys will be removing it as they put the new fence in. That way it protects the, uh, people from walking up the sidewalk. And, um, we just need to make sure we make a motion and amend the agenda for the str- or not agenda, but the, um, budget to get that money moved into street improvements. Should be good to go. Should be a nine day, nine to two, nine days to two week process. He said he could do a hundred feet a day. So it'll be a quick turnaround chat and I hope that we can kind of, while we take the fence out and replace, we can clean out behind it and get the bank kind of cleared away of all the debris and the, uh, kudzu vines and all that stuff. That's just an, an update on that because they had called and I felt like we needed to be informed about it and get the money moved over so that it can be taken care of.
Make a motion to get another money over to street improvements and inspire the work.
I second.
All in favor? Any opposed? And you just wanted to talk about the audit, Debbie?
Uh, yes, the Graham Star had been putting on, in the paper about the state audit and some of that pertained to me. And I felt like that I needed to address the town and the community as to the findings for the mileage that was, um, in question about for me. During twenty twenty-two, from February up until June, I had turned in some mileage which I was told that I needed to. I was never given the form to complete to go along with that mileage. And then back in the July of twenty twenty-three meeting, I even asked again about that form and still wasn't given that form. And after that, I went ahead and turned in the mileage. Some of that mileage was pertaining to, um, going to pick up trophies in Asheville. I actually had to go to a car show to present our car show to it. The only way you can kind of get people to come to your stuff is if you go out and you let people know about it. So I had to do that. I had a passport adventure book that I had to get the signs and stuff put up for that. And that was a grant that we would have lost if I had not have done that by March. So some of that mileage was for that. Some of the mileage was for going to pick up banners and supplies and different things. And I just wanted to clarify to the Graham Star. I know Trudy or Rudy, Ruby. You had called me and asked me about it and I felt like I needed to let the community know. That it was stuff that was legitimate. It wasn't personal. There was a lot of times that I did do some of the stuff with my personal stuff that I did not turn in. So I just wanted to clarify that. I know Graham Star has questioned about it and I wanted to just be upfront with you. That's all.
Okay. And I wanted to go in the corner.
Is this the last?
Yeah. Make it out of the way where you can read it.
Sent to the provision of North Carolina general statute one forty-three dash three eighteen eleven A three and one forty-three dash three eighteen eleven C. I move that the town of Robbinsville Town Council go into closed session to receive advice from our attorney for the town of Will Phillips, the attorney for the town of Robbinsville Town Council, which advice comes within the purview of the attorney client privilege. The advice will be general legal advice about legal issues or legal matters. Just to close, I make a motion that, uh, we get up the insurance company and check if RTA's covered under our workers' comp. If not, see if we can add a rider for workers' comp for RTA business.
I second that.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? If we have any more business, if we have any more business, any kind of motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.